Five minutes. Three minutes to airtime. Two minutes.
One of your minutes, Ashley's pulling minutes. Because, uh, the one you did where she called in, because...
One minute.
I think we're just so cute.
It was good, it was, yeah. It was funny. There's much more to it than has happened. Cause it was, it was great though.
The school board of the Duval County School District has now convened in its regular monthly meeting to everyone present and to our television viewers, I wish to extend a warm welcome to this meeting of the Duval County School Board. The vision statement of the Duval County School Board states, "Every student is inspired and prepared for success in college or career and life." The mission statement of the Duval County School Board is, "To provide educational excellence in every school and every classroom for every student, every day." The Duval County School Board is here tonight to listen to reports from district staff and to set policy for the district that will improve student achievement. We will also address budgets, contracts, personnel appointments, and other business items that require a vote of the board. The management and day-to-day operations of the district are the responsibility of the superintendent. It is not the role of the board to make managerial nor operational decisions. The board has policies and procedures in place to assist the superintendent in resolving management and operational issues. If items appear to move quickly, it is because the board meets in an agenda committee meeting prior to the board meeting for an in-depth review of all agenda items. The committee meeting for the October 1, 2019, school board meeting will be held on September 17, 2019 at 9:00 a.m. and the public is invited to attend. As a show of courtesy and respect to each other, we ask that all mobile phones be turned off and that no flash photography be used during the meeting. For those wishing to address the board during our public comments portion of the public meeting, please note that we will accept speaker cards until 6:20 p.m. Thank you for taking the time to join us this evening and for your interest in the operation of the Duval County School District. I invite everyone to stand for the opening message given tonight by retired pastor Ted Corley and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Would you join me as I pray? Lord God Jehovah, in the name of your beloved Son, Yeshua HaMashiach, Jesus our Messiah, we come to you today with grateful hearts. I am thankful for the opportunity to pray for the men and women who make up the school board of Duval County Public Schools and the superintendent, the staff of this great district, every administrator, every teacher, every employee, and our children. I thank you that your word tells us in Jeremiah 33, 3, "Call on me and I will answer you. I will show you great and wondrous things that you do not know." So today for this district, we call on you. We call on you, Lord, to grant wisdom and discernment for these men and women as they guide and direct the lives of our child, children's education. It is our prayer that Duval County Public Schools will become the finest urban school district in America. We know that you are sovereign. We know that you are in charge of all things. We know that when we pray, we must remember you answer three ways, yes, no, and wait. So our prayer is that you would give us patience to wait, faith to trust in you in all the matters before this board or its future. For the matter concerning the half-cent sales tax. Why the delay? Don't know, Lord, but I know you do. And I know that you have a plan, for your word says, "I have plans for you and they are good and not bad." And so we ask your blessing upon this plan. We ask you to prosper this district. We thank you for Superintendent Green. We thank you for her leadership. We ask you, Lord, to put a hedge of protection around this board and the superintendent that comments and hurtful things that are said and done would not wound them, that they would be joyful in heart and faithful in the matters before them. Bless this night. Grant us the wonder of your presence, your wisdom, and your guidance for these men and women and our school district. We ask these things in the glorious name of Yeshua and we give you praise and thanksgiving for the answer even as we speak it. Amen.
Our pledge of allegiance...
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight we have a presentation from District 6, Seabreeze Elementary, Principal Kim... Oh, District 2, I'm sorry, it says 2. Principal Kimball and Board Member Anderson's district. I know it's a great school because I had nieces and nephews who went there, so...
Good evening Superintendent Green, board members, colleagues, and friends. My name is Amy Kimball and I'm the proud principal of Seabreeze Elementary, the gem of the beaches. I'm here tonight to share a bit about our school and to affirm how all of our work in Duval County pays off. This past year, Seabreeze Elementary gained 100 points in our school grade. This accomplishment gave Seabreeze the honor of the highest gain in the elementary region. I would like to share a bit of insight on what we believe got us to this destination. You will see there is no magic formula or shortcut. Instead, we have a great synergy, working together aligned with district expectations of excellence. When I joined Seabreeze Elementary a few years ago, 75% of our staff had recently settled there. Many have only been there around three to five years. It was important for our team to have an identity, systems, and a connection to not only our school, but to one another. We put a lot of time and thought into a mission that prepared our seahorses for success beyond the elementary level. Our mission reads... At Seabreeze Elementary, we aspire to build a foundation for lifelong learning by fostering individual growth. We provide unique opportunities for developing leadership skills, critical thinking, and creative expression. We want our seahorses empowered, prepared, and fulfilled. This vision for success meant reaching every single student, every day, and every classroom. Our vision states that we strive to provide an engaging, positive, and thoughtful environment that will reach the whole child every day. These are more than words on paper, but serve as our fuel to bring this excellent to our children, excellence. Seabreeze Elementary is a neighborhood school. It services 527 students in grades K through 5. We are able to host our own gifted population and we have extended day and community education programs that provide enrichment, tutoring, and leadership opportunities. Last year, our teachers and parents truly collaborated for student growth. We were given a cabinet add-on position that was strategically used for reading intervention. Our team has the heart, talent, and dedication that you want in your classrooms. We have not one, but two Gladys Pryor recipients currently teaching at Seabreeze. Many of us are wearing the hats of both Seabreeze employee and seahorse parent, so if that's not teaching from the heart, I don't know what is. Our seahorses are kind, compassionate, and deeply connected to our community. Here you can see a group of children caring for our school grounds. Our PTA and neighborhood come together several times throughout the year, tenderly giving back to our land. Our children want to give back to their community and they're always looking for ways to care for others and demonstrate empathy. Last year, we held drives for local animal shelters, made cards for Beaches Baptist residents, donated goods to our neighbors at the Avante Nursing Home, there's so much more. This year, we're continuing to cultivate kindness as Seabreeze Elementary is partnering with the Kate Amato Foundation. It's important for us to have a creative, engaging opportunity that combines learning with the joy of being a child. We dress up as word nerds and book characters to show off our love of literacy. We open our doors to volunteers and parents who will read to our students, host live science demonstrations, or assist with math fluency. We look for every moment of time, including before and after school, and think of ways to incorporate STEM lessons and hands-on activities. Our children are data literate, set academic goals, and then work to achieve and surpass these goals. Our children recognize the value of a data chat and they have the growth mindset necessary to realize that lessons come after mistakes. Seabreeze is incredibly blessed to have a strong community and family support system. Our faith-based and business partners sponsor events, fund areas of student need, and provide academic presentations to our children. We have united PTA and SAC teams that focus on student achievement, well-being, and community engagement. Our families reinforce charity and compassion and donate their time and energy into collecting food, clothing, and toys so that no child goes without. This year, we have a new nonprofit agency, the Friends of Seabreeze. They are assembling to rally behind the needs of our school and the goal is to eventually fund a full-time science lab position. Our network of community members, families, and volunteers devotes countless hours supporting our students and teachers. We are a proud recipient of the Five Star Award and we expect this condition, excuse me, tradition to continue. We wouldn't be taking care of the whole child without a little bit of friendly competition. Though a smaller school, we are second in the district for the American Heart Association's Jump Rope for Heart. Our school is able to host its own Seahorse Sprint, bringing donated funds directly into the school. Dr. Green, when you first introduced yourself to principals, you talked about putting us in the game. At Seabreeze Elementary, we play for fun. We demonstrate school spirit and district pride and we also play to win. The whole child includes safety, security, and general wellness. Seabreeze partners with agencies that provide character education. We have mentors that connect with our seahorses, serving as that cheerleader in the background. We recognize and celebrate positive desired behavior that we want our seahorse to radiate through the halls and into the streets of Jacksonville Beach. I would like to close this evening by addressing the heart, spirit, and love behind the work that we all do. Ensuring our children have everything that they need requires that sometimes we are pouring from an empty cup and we are lighting fires with what sparks that we have left. None of us take this responsibility lightly. Each day, all of us in Team Duval show up with our A-game regardless of what our school grade might be. Each moment requires hard work, dedication, and passion. Our schools invest in our children so that our children may return that investment in their futures. When our students leave us, they are empowered, prepared, and fulfilled. Board members, I can't thank you enough for the fight that you are leading. You know our children deserve the best we have to offer. You know our schools are their safe havens, their homes away from home, and their shelter in times of crisis. We are worth this investment, we are worth the time, we are worth this fight. Keep up the great work and I promise you, there are 200 schools that are the gems of Duval County. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Stay right there, if you will. I know that Board Member Anderson would certainly like to, um, to say a few words.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much for being here, Ms. Kimball. I think that Seabreeze is one of those schools, as you can see, really puts all the pieces together. Their 100-point gains last year were phenomenal and I know that that is, that is that whole child, all the way around approach. I'm so grateful for the stakeholders, the parents, the community support, the faith-based partners, all those people that come in to help support our students, to help support our staff. So thank you for pouring from an empty cup, for finding, for finding all of the sparks to light the fires for all those seahorses. So thank you so much. Thank you to Seabreeze and, you know, I'm so proud of District 2, but thank you for being here tonight.
I would now like to invite Dr. Green to make the following presentations and Board Member Anderson to present certificates.
Their mission is simple, to make every child's potential a reality and to advocate for all children. Tonight, we begin by recognizing Team Duval PTAs that embody this so well, they were honored by the Florida PTA with awards. They're from Alamaconny Elementary, Julian Landon College Preparatory, Douglas Anderson School of the Arts, and also our district-wide Duval County Council PTA. First, we'll begin with individual schools. Alamaconny, um, excuse me, Alamaconny's PTA was recognized for increasing membership by 150, implementing safety programs like internet safety and water safety, and for taking steps to welcome new families and celebrate military children. Here with us from Alamaconny are PTA President Lisa Britt and School Principal Kathy Stalls. Next, Landon's PTA received awards for devoting several programs to fathers and father figures and for their achievement in training its board, performing an audit, and maintaining strong communications with members. Here from Landon are PTA President Terry Nelson, Awards Chairperson Rena Shabon, Donuts with Dads co-chair Jakita Franklin, and School Principal Katrina Blakely. And finally, with Douglas Anderson's PTA, they were honored for its implementation of Mental Health Mondays, a program and resource for students, and for increasing its membership by 215. Here from Douglas Anderson's PTA are President Niti Everi, Inhey Carjono, Nicole Story, Allison Schwartz, and Kelly Aldridge, and School Principal Melanie Hammer. At the district level, our Duval County Council PTA was honored for two of its Lunch and Learn programs. These are opportunities for PTAs and parents to hear presentations from professionals. The first was about suicide prevention and mental health, and the other was on raising children in the digital age. Now, all of these awards were earned under the leadership of last year's Duval County Council PTA President Felida Tutt, who is currently serving as Florida PTA Regional Rep. 3. Also here on behalf of the Duval County Council PTA are current Presidents Teresa Rogers, Kay Hawkins, and Kathy Geiler. Please help us congratulate Alamaconny, Landon, Douglas Anderson, and our Duval County Council PTA for their outstanding accomplishments. It's an elite designation only a small number of magnet schools in the country can claim and tonight we are pleased to announce one of those schools is in Team Duval. For our next presentation, we recognize Douglas Anderson School of the Arts for being named a nationally certified magnet school by Magnet Schools of America, or MSA. As of this year, Douglas Anderson is one of just 14 new nationally certified schools in the country, bringing the total number of nationally certified schools to 151. Becoming a nationally certified magnet school is no easy task and is an enormous undertaking. Schools participate in a rigorous 10-month evaluation process in which they must document how they're meeting the group's magnet school standards of excellence as well as its five pillars. According to MSA, this process allows schools to strengthen their top qualities and raise the bar for magnet schools all over the country. Schools like Douglas Anderson are not only quote, "setting the strongest example of what's possible," but they also demonstrate that their faculty, staff, administrators, and communities have truly achieved something special. Joining us tonight from the school are Principal Melanie Hammer, Assistant Principals William Spell and Jaclyn Sanotti-Durman, Gifted Lead Teacher Bonnie Lamp, Dean of Students Tammy Sprock Boyd, and Principal Secretary Joan Penzera. Please congra- help us congratulate Douglas Anderson School of the Arts for its designation as a nationally certified magnet school. For our final presentation, we wish to share a story's immense gratitude toward one of our teachers, but we think it may be best if we tell the story in their own words. And so now we want to read a letter that a Bartram Springs parent wrote to our elementary region superintendent recounting the heroic actions of his son's teacher. Here is the letter. Hello, Mrs. Simon. I am writing to you today because one of your staff of Bartram Springs Elementary. Yesterday, my son Nicholas Mastro Giuseppe had a seizure during class. I want you and others to know that the actions of the staff member Carly Hurst was not unnoticed. Ms. Hurst jumped into action when she noticed my son was seizing. She instructed the other classmates, classmates out of class so they didn't have to view the incident as it was unfolding. She came to my son when he needed it the most. She stayed by his side the whole time from the start of the incident to the end of the transport by fire rescue until we arrived at Wolfson Children's Hospital. She had all of the information that we had given her about Nick in a folder of his medical conditions, medical history, his information and medication that he takes on a daily basis. She calmed him down after he came to. I was impressed by her actions be as, being as I am a medical provider for the state of Florida. To have someone with little medical experience in a true emergency situation handle it like she did, I commend her actions on the whole incident. I would hope the school district would recognize her for her actions and courage for this as well. I can now be at ease because I know his teacher knows how to control the situation and take command and care for not only my kid, but other children. And he signed the letter. And tonight, Ms. Hurst is here with young Nicholas, as you can see, and Dr. Green would also like to present her with something.
Ms. Hurst, thank you so much for what you have done for this young man. Many times, we are here when we present the superintendent's coin of excellence, it has to do with academics. But there's this old adage, people don't know how mu- don't care how much you know until they know how much you care. And obviously, this young man knows that you care a lot about him and his family knows that you care a lot. So we know that his education is in great hands. And so I would like to present to you the superintendent's coin of excellence. Hello! Would you like to say congratulations to Ms. Hurst?
Yes!
Say it, say congratulations, Ms. Hurst.
Congratulations, Miss Hurst.
Approval of the September 9, 2019 Agenda. Did the Duval County School Board approve the September 9, 2019 Agenda as submitted on August 30, 2019 with the following changes? Administration and Business Services Budget and Annual Financial Report, inclusion of cost attachment added. Board Member Travel Item amended. Approval of Minutes, August 26, 2019, Special Board Meeting Item amended. Is there a motion?
With approvals.
Second.
It was moved by Vice Chair Jones and seconded by Board Member Grimes. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I call for your vote.
I'm not seeing the...
You need to log in.
Sorry, I'm logged into August. Give me one sec.
We are now on to the chairman's report. We are thankful in Duval County that we survived the storm and that Hurricane Dorian certainly did not do the damage in Duval County that it did in the Bahamas. I was so proud of our community, particularly our schools, as we saw them open as a shelter from a storm for many residents. It was neat to visit shelters and to see residents who were from Pennsylvania, and they were traveling, and they needed a safe place to stop. I think it's important for our community to recognize the fact that a lot of time and energy and effort goes into staffing and maintaining our shelters during a storm, and I'm very thankful for the leadership of Dr. Green in this effort, and I applaud our community. It was also exciting to see the Red Cross, the City of Jacksonville, and Duval County Public Schools, and many other agencies across the city come together to ensure that everyone there would be safe. Many of you are aware that the J-Bill has changed, presented by Representative Fisher. Originally, the J-Bill that he introduced was for an appointed school board. However, last week, as some of us sat on Friday in the Rules Committee meeting, we were told that that J-Bill had been changed to an appointed, to an elected superintendent. The curious thing about this J-Bill is that during last year's legislative session, there was a great effort by the Florida legislators to require that all counties in the state of Florida have an appointed superintendent. It's also important for the citizens of Jacksonville to know that Duval County did, in fact, have an elected superintendent, which ended with the schools being discredited. I'd just like to share with you a few points, and the board will have a discussion at a later date this month to discuss this J-Bill. Thirty-seven of the 50 states in America have appointed superintendents. Over 90% of the districts with appointed superintendents in the state of Florida received a school district grade of an A or a B. Districts with elected superintendents are typically rural counties and have fewer than 100,000 students. Our last superintendent search brought applicants from around the country. This board made an extra effort to engage the public, and one of the most exciting things was on the Saturday, when we had our forum where we had students participating, teachers participating, as well as community members. To read comments from business leaders in the community, small business leaders, teachers and parents, all decide that Dr. Diana Green should be our next superintendent was very encouraging. So, just because it was an appointed position doesn't mean we did not engage the public. Appointed superintendents often bring applicants who are experienced, have a strong background in education, and are able to move a district forward. I would just like to close by saying that failed solutions of the past should not be a part of our future. Dr. Green?
Thank you, Ms. Hershey. I'm going to start with my student, my report tonight to talk about our student enrollment. It's interesting, when we do these reports, we're sort of reporting a month in the lag, and we try to make sure that the public understands what's happening in the school district. Well, as you know, on August 10th, we started school, and as you can see, by the 10th day of school, this time last year, we were up a little over 653 students. So, we were a little concerned that our enrollment was going to be significantly lower. But as you can see, by Day 20, or really Day 17, September 9th, we are up to 129,658. We're actually a little over 396 students higher than we were on Day 20 this time last year. So, our enrollment is growing, and I do need to say, this is all students, charter and our traditional public schools. Our traditional public schools are maintaining their enrollment. Their growth is, as we've said in that enrollment study, that our enrollment pretty much is staying stagnant and even. And again, our enrollment is up a little bit, but statistically, I would say, it's still staying stagnant. We thought our charter schools were going to grow by 1,000 students. They are actually up a little over 600 students, so they've not, I'm sorry, 800 students, so they've not quite reached 1,000. And our data shows that charter school enrollment starts to decline after Survey 2. So, we are probably experiencing the highest enrollment for the year as it relates to charter schools. Student enrollment is very important because it impacts our teacher vacancies. Looking at our staffing report as of September 6, I know this is a little small, but starting the blue is 2018, the yellow represents 2019, the blue and yellow represent the vacancies that we have. So, starting the year, August, we were at 273 vacancies. And as you can see, the vacancies are higher this year than they were in the past, but by the time we got to September 6, our vacancies are lower. So, our vacancies right now, we have 184 vacancies. Compared to this time last year, we had 237 vacancies. So, I think some of the contracts that we have put out there with organizations that help us find teachers, we have, for the first time this year, a contract that helps us find ESE teachers. That's what's helping us bring these vacancies down to the levels where they are. But, I do not see the vacancies getting to this point, below 100 vacancies. One, we have teachers that come and go, teachers that certification may have expired, but we continue to work hard with our partners, as well as Ms. Schultz has done an outstanding job of creating programs that go out and help teachers who may not have been successful. You know, sometimes your first year is very challenging, and you may not be successful, but she has created a program to go back and help these teachers. It's called, is it reboot? Restart? It's one of those. That we help teachers who may not have had a successful year come back, provide additional training, and many of them, we started it late last year, and they're still employed with us. So, that means that it's working, and that support is helping. So, we're starting this year off with more students than we did last year, and we're also starting with less vacancies than we did last year at this time. So, Ms. Hershey just talked about what we did with Hurricane Dorian, and I need to talk about what all goes into being prepared, whether the hurricane was a non-event or the hurricane heads directly for Duval County Public Schools. We have to go through what we call pre-storm preparations. Because our, and people might not like the statement I'm about to make, but because our facilities are so old, we have to install what we call shutters, hurricane shutters. Many newer-built facilities, you have hurricane windows. Therefore, those windows can handle maximum speeds up to 150 miles per hour, but because our schools that are being used as hurricanes are much, as hurricane shutters are much older, we have to install these hurricane shutters. When I lived in Manatee County, every house had a requirement to have these aluminum hurricane shutters. And when Hurricane Irma came, my husband and son took about four days to get those things installed on our house. So, imagine, that's just a house, what it takes to get them installed on an elementary school or a middle school that needs those hurricane shutters. So, we actually had to start Wednesday before that hurricane was days away from Duval County. So, even whether it's an event or non-event, we have to start somewhere between four to five days before a hurricane hits us to be prepared for that hurricane. So, in being prepared, we had our maintenance group go out and install the hurricane shutters, the generators that need to be checked and refueled, sandbags deployed. We had sandbags deployed to this facility because of what happened with Hurricane Irma, the water was coming in the front lobby. So, that took 150 employees to just prepare our facilities to be hurricane shelters. Shelter supplies, we had 11 employees deliver 1,335 special need cots, 1,235 standard cots, 315 animal cages, 800 sleeping mats, and 1,400 blankets. Those are dispersed for every hurricane event. The only ones that are not kept are the sleeping mats and the blankets that are used at Lavilla. The individuals who are at Lavilla Shelter are allowed to take those mats and blankets with them. We had ongoing emergency management. Director Edwards' team stays at the emergency management 24/7, along with someone from custodial and maintenance. They are there at the EOC 24/7. Now, I felt like I was there 24/7, but I think I only visited twice a day. Our bus contractors, they remove all our buses from the beaches. All of our district vehicles have to be relocated. They are all put in a location that is secure to ensure that our vehicles have an opportunity to have the least amount of damage if we actually are experiencing a hurricane event. We opened 12 shelters, and one of those shelters is the Legend Center. So, our general-purpose shelters are Landmark, Twin Lakes, Landmark Middle School, Twin Lakes Elementary, Chimney Lakes Elementary, Mandarin Middle School, Ocean Way Elementary School, Abyss Park Elementary, Andrew Robinson Elementary, Arlington Middle School. Our special need shelter is Atlantic Coast High School, Ocean Way Middle School, Enterprise Elementary School, and other that generally, Lavilla Middle School is generally for our homeless population, and the Schelsbacher Center, their residents all go to Lavilla Middle School. We man our shelters with at least one, this year, we said one or two, but this year, we sent out a notice to all administrators to volunteer, and we were, I don't want to say amazed, because it's just sort of an expectation, and many of them signed up to volunteer to help be in the rotation to be shelter managers. Our school police, Director Edwards, had two police officers at every shelter, along with support from JSO. Our maintenance staff, we have at least two maintenance staff members at every shelter, three to five custodians, providing GCA contracted services, made sure their custodians were at each of our shelters. And then, we had one or two chartwell contracted by the Red Cross. We do not contract for the food during hurricane or when hurricane shelters. The Red Cross contracts with food service with chartwells, and we partner with the Red Cross. So, the Red Cross had anywhere to six to eight people at each shelter. When we look at shelter utilization, the numbers were small for this particular hurricane. As you can see, Landmark Middle School had 107, and then Lavilla, as you can see, was the largest with 178. On the right-hand side, you can also see the capacity of our shelters. So, when you see the capacity at 2,600, as someone who's actually manned a shelter with 2,600 individuals, you truly need to make sure your administrators are prepared, because it takes quite a bit of logistics to be able to move people around and make sure you can keep people as comfortable as possible when you look at these capacity numbers. As you know, Wednesday was supposed to be the event of the Hurricane Dorian. We did have wind and rain, but they closed the shelters on Thursday. See, GCA sent 20 to 30 custodians to clean each of our 11 shelters. It took about four hours to sanitize each shelter and prepare for opening of school. Our principals, they assigned themselves, well, I won't say they assigned themselves, our regional superintendents assigned them to shelters. They went in and helped collect the cots, helped get a lot of that resource supplies loaded onto our maintenance department trucks so that they could get out of the way to allow the custodians to work. So, we were very thankful that our administrators, they all pitched in, and our district staff also pitched in. Dr. Krisner and Ms. Young went to Lavilla, and I think they could clean every office in here, because I saw them doing a great job, getting that taken care of. Other parts of logistics, if we look at food service, we did not have any food loss. We did not lose any power long enough for any of that to be concerned. All kitchens were cleaned, there was no damage reported to food service equipment, no product loss due to, most of our schools had generators prepared. If we did lose power, and food delivered to all schools with minor adjustments, to menus and updates were provided online. As it relates to transportation, we had no issues. Road accessibility, we made sure all of that was checked on Thursday. We also made sure we had an action plan. If there were locations where students, we could not reach those students based on transportation issues, but we were very fortunate. but we were very fortunate to not have any issues with this particular hurricane. As it relates to maintenance, if we had any fallen trees and limbs, the goal was to remove. And they cut down a lot, they trimmed a lot of our trees around our schools prior to the hurricane. And after the event, they were able to remove any trees that had any twigs or anything laying out on the campuses. They were able to take care of that on Thursday. We had no school flooding. We had minimal damage to three schools as it relates to roofing and those roofs have been repaired. We did have one water line damage and it was due to a tree uprooting through the event. We had four broken windows. They have been either replaced or ordered. We had approximately 50 tiles that had to be replaced. All grounds have been cleared and the shutters that needed to be installed were completed on Thursday, nine, five. Again, we had quite a few volunteers coming out to support our schools, to support maintenance, to support our administrators, to get school back online for Friday. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Green. We are now on the public comment portion of our agenda. Those wishing to address the board must fill out a blue speaker card. The school board welcomes your comments on matters that are before the board for consideration. It is not the board's intent to respond this evening, but to use the input in our deliberations. To give everyone appropriate respect and courtesy, we ask the audience to refrain from audible comments or applause. When you come to the microphone, please state your name for the record. Please limit your comments to three minutes. When the green light in the front of me starts blinking, you will have a minute remaining. When the light turns yellow, you will have 30 seconds remaining. When it turns red and the buzzer sounds, your time will be up. If your concerns exceed that time, you may present written comments to the board. You are asked to refrain from references to specific individuals and to follow expectations for civil discourse. Please remember the speaker cards were only accepted until 6:20. Thank you for taking time to address the board. Our first speaker tonight is John Turner, followed by Blake Harper.
Good evening, Madam Chair, school board members, Superintendent Green. My name is John Turner. Last month, the school board and city council had a joint meeting trying to air out, have a meeting in the mind to try to get the referendum through. And I watched the video twice. Most people don't even bother to watch that, but I found it interesting. And one thing that came up over and over again, and they kept talking about the elephant in the room. You didn't talk about the T-Rex in the room, and we'll discuss that in just a moment here. One of the school board members, I know I'm not supposed to give names, was a little confused and wanted to know why school concurrency does not work. Why is there no money for school concurrency? And the reason for that is when this started back in 2007, I approached the school board and city council and said, "Do not approve this. Enter a local agreement" because it's designed not to work. It's deliberately carved up so that the developers will not have to pay a fair share to helping build new schools as they build up the community with new subdivisions. The state law reversed that back in 2010. So you should know that school concurrency is optional. It's not required. So this inter-oral local agreement that you have with the city is your choice. You should also know that your level of service, which you say is 105%, is your choice. There's no requirement for that. You can make it 90%. Your categories or whatever you want to call them, your concurrency service areas, those are the maps that you drove, drove, drawn up. Your school districts and these CSAs do not match. Some of them are very funny looking, and there's a reason for that. What the developers wanted to do was make sure that no matter what happened, no matter how overpopulated a school was, that you couldn't force them to pay some fees for being a violation of school concurrency. So with all that being said, what I recommend that you do, and I ask you nicely, please, is get with the joint planning committee. You have new people now, new elected officials, and take this up again. And say, "Let's look at our school concurrency and let's see if we need to revise this so that we can actually get these developers to start paying their fair share." I'm going to give you a quick example. I don't know how much time I have left. District seven, for example, Bartram Springs, you have a 20-day count. I'd like to see that one. It was like 116% last year. Mandarin High is at 100%. And what's going to happen is these developers are going to continue, and you go down Phillips Highway, they're going to continue to put hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of more houses and apartments. And they won't have to do anything about it because the way the inter-oral local agreement was drawn up. So I beg you, please, take a look at that. And if you want to do something about overcrowding in the schools and you need money for building new schools, that is one way to do it. But it's up to you and city council to do that. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Blake Harper, followed by Tim Miller.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, school board members. First of all, I'm very, I'm very glad personally that you all are safe, that the children are safe. I'm here to speak about the half-cent sales tax. I grew up in an educator's family. Spent five years in Africa. My father was a chaplain and a teacher in Africa. When he came back, he was a principal of a school in Rowayton, Connecticut. So I think I have an understanding of the lot of schools. I also am qualified to teach high school, social studies, and history in the state of Florida. Folks, we need to take care of the children, but we don't need to hold them hostage. And quite frankly, I think that's what's happening. Scripture says, "All scripture is profitable for doctrine, for reproof, for correction, for instruction in righteousness." Instruction in righteousness. Folks, the people need to get together. I do not believe from all the work that the city council members have put in on this and the valid issues that they've brought to the table, that I do not believe that they have any interest in undermining the ultimate goal. That ultimate goal is to make sure that the students are, have proper facilities. That's the reality of it. We don't have it, and I think everyone up there at that dais understands we don't have it. But we have to, we have to cross that bridge together. I think you guys are going to lose in the court of public opinion if you don't lose in court. I was absolutely amazed. I, we can go through the comments of public comments here, what instructions you give here. But when the school board employees, the teachers and the, and the employees were a mob, openly disrespected the city council, violated the rules that they're expected to, to adhere to here in this room, you gained no support. You did the worst, they did the worst thing they could possibly do. I think everybody wants to take care of the children. I think they want to do the right thing. But when we have a comment such as construction costs in Manatee County have clocked in at over 80% over budget in the last three years, there's real concern about the idea, about one and a half billion dollars of taxpayers' money being used correctly, used in the right way. So please, put, get, put the egos aside, put the lawyers aside. My father, by the way, went to Harvard Law School, so not only was he an educator, he was an attorney. We don't, you all don't need the lawyers to do this. You all can get together and you can get it worked out because ultimately it's for the children.
Thank you. Tim Miller, followed by Darlene Miller.
Good evening. My name is Tim Miller. First, I'd like to commend the, the school board and the whole school administration for the work they did during the hurricane. It is a monumental task. Very few people realize that, but it is. And I, I do appreciate the service to the community. But following that, I need to go back a few years. Our, our issues with IEP compliance have been well documented over the years. Here, in meetings, you name it. Including information that was incorrectly passed from district officials through a school administrator down to teachers. One particular incident preventing my son from some grade recovery because of non-compliance with his IEP. Things got better the last couple of years, and that's great. I appreciate that. He graduated last year with a GPA a few hundredths of a point, hundredths of a point below a 3.0. The problem is, 3.0 is a magic number. It's magic for scholarships. So a few hundred points is not eligible for any scholarships for the most part. He's also not eligible for some colleges, and he's not eligible for certain job training programs, which he's now trying to work through, through the deferment process because of his disability. A few hundred points, a few hundredths of a point, sorry. We were even told, hey, that was the past. Things are going better. Let's move forward. And we did, until we found out very recently, a few hundredths of a point now locks him out of many opportunities. A few hundredths of a point will affect him for the rest of his life. When the district says excellence for every school, every classroom, every student, every day, that includes IEP compliance. Little things matter, and they matter big because this will affect our son for the rest of his life. And how many others are in similar situations? A few hundredths of a points that could have been done through the grade recovery that he should have been entitled to based on policy that he didn't get. Now it affects him for life. Thank you.
Thank you. Darlene Miller.
I would just like to go off on some of the things that my husband just told you. Because I read the emails again that were received through a FUPA request. And basically, compliance sent an email to the school back when he was a freshman and said, "If the IEP was followed, then grade recovery is not necessary to be given if the IEP was followed." That's a very important statement there. The very next email I pulled, you know, as we go through all the emails about our child, is somebody from the school emailing the teachers. "You can't give him grade recovery. It's not on his IEP." And like we said, these issues are very real. Our child is not the only one out there. We're just the only ones right now speaking. Because people are beaten down and they don't know what else to do. And again, we know this happened four years ago. And things have gotten a lot better. We do appreciate it. And we do appreciate Dr. Green for opening up to us and making this more of a pleasant ride than superintendents of the past. We just want to make sure, and that's the one reason we battle, is that this doesn't happen to other people's children. IEPs are important. Accommodation is important. Accommodations are not there to, to give a leg up to children. They're there to level the playing field. When a child gets, has a disability, they shut down, they don't do as well, they may not be able to do all of the work another child can do. But it doesn't mean their intelligence are any lower. I mean, if you want to get technical, I think on the end of course exams, he made two threes and the rest of them were all fours and fives. He had a five on his chemistry in the course exam. And a D at the, in the class, of course, somebody D'd him out of the class. He had Fs, F, 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 D, but a five on the end of course exam. Sometimes we need to think about what's going on and is it deeper than what you see. Thank you.
Thank you. We are now on to comments from parent organizations. Is there anyone here from a parent organization wishing to speak?
Good evening. Chairperson Hershey, school board members, Dr. Green. My name is Teresa Rogers, and I'm the president of the Duval County Council of PTAs and PTSAs, and I'm reporting tonight on behalf of DCC PTA. In this last month, our association has continued to conduct trainings and otherwise assist our local units here in Duval County. We have also put an emphasis on keeping our local units informed regarding the half-cent tax referendum, including how to contact their local leaders to let their voices be heard. The feedback we received was that many of our parents did in fact reach out to their local leaders to express their support of the half-cent tax referendum. We also, at our first general meeting of the year, presented a resolution supporting the half-cent tax referendum to our general membership. The DCC PTA has also introduced an initiative called Duval PTAs Have Heart, where we, in partnership with all of our local units, will be supporting a local agency in our county as a way to bring attention to the many needs of our community and continue to foster the close relationship between DCC PTA and our more than 100 local units. I want to close by reiterating some of what I said last month. As PTA, we are child advocates. We are here to work and fight for the needs of all children because every single child deserves to have an equitable educational experience. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from a parent organization wishing to address the board? How about comments from employee organizations? I see Ms. Brady and Mr. Sobal, either of you? Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Did you want to come, Mr. Sobal?
No.
Oh, okay. All right. Approval of minutes. We have been meeting a lot, so I will read these. The Duval County School Board approved the minutes for the meetings listed in the agenda item. July 30, 2019, special board meeting. July 30, 2019, special board meeting. Approval of 2019, 2020, tentative mileage and tentative budget. August 6, 2019, City Council Rules Committee meeting. August 6, 2019, City Council Finance Committee meeting. August 6, regular board meeting. August 6, 2019, Board Member Meeting, Hershey Joyce. August 13, 2019, Board Workshop. August 13, 2019, Legislative Subcommittee. August 14, 2019, Joint Meeting, City Council and School Board. August 14, 2019, Special Board Meeting, Student Expulsion Hearing. August 20, 2019, City Council Finance Committee meeting. August 20, 2019, City Council Rules Committee meeting. August 21, 2019, Board Workshop and Committee Meeting. August 21, 2019, Legislative Subcommittee meeting. August 26, 2019, Special Board Meeting. August 26, 2019, Audit Committee meeting. August 28, 2019, Special Board Meeting. August 29, Audit Committee meeting. Is there a motion?
I move.
Second.
It was moved by Board Member Grimes and seconded by Vice Chair Jones. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I call for your vote. By your actions, you passed this 7-0. Approval of consent agenda. Are there any items to place on the consent agenda or items for discussion? Is there a motion?
I move.
Second.
It was moved by Board Member Grimes and seconded by Board Member Willie. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I call for your vote. By your actions, you passed this item 7-0. We're on to discussion agenda. Public hearing and vote revisions to Chapter 9 Board Policies that the Duval County School Board conduct a public hearing and adopt Policy 9.66 Sales Tax Oversight Committee. I was supposed to ask Dr. Green to read that. Is that your recommendation, Dr. Green?
Yes.
Okay. I opened the public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak on this? Come on up.
Good evening. Again, my name is John Turner. I oppose this. Reading through this, essentially what you have is 22 people. Reading through this, essentially what you have is 22 people who have a vote, but they have no authority to vote for anything. They just give your opinion. We think you're doing a good job or you're not doing a good job. There is nothing in here that shows me that they have any authority to conduct an audit, to verify information. They're supposed to report that the money's being spent appropriately, but there's no teeth in this. The other one that bothers me is the list of the people, the categories of people that will be on this board. As I mentioned earlier, T-Rex. T-Rex is on this board. There are quite a few people on this board that really don't have the best interest in the school system. They have the best interest in their development community or the realty community. I would think that you would actually have some people in there that represent the community and not the business community. There is the PTA, but if I understand this right, the PTA is not there permanently. They have to rotate out. I would like you to reconsider this as far as who is on this committee and why they're there in the first place and what their true intentions are. From my viewpoint as a taxpayer, I don't see anybody looking out for me, the taxpayer. I see people looking out for their special interest groups once again. And this is a $2 billion project and they all see this big pile of money and it says at the end, they can have a request for the leftovers and how they want to see it spent. That's too tempting. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing none, I close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
I moved.
Second.
It was moved by Board Member Grimes and seconded by Vice Chair Hershey. Is there any, I mean Hershey and Jones, Vice Chair Jones, I'm sorry. Is there any board member wishing to, to speak?
Thank you, Chairman Hershey. Through the chair to the superintendent, could you speak to the auditing that would happen were we to be able to get a vote of the public and the public to vote to implement the sales surtax referendum?
Through the chair to Board Member Smith-Wares. This policy, one, is for the board to bring together an oversight committee, which was in your resolution that stated that this would be also monitored by an oversight committee.
Thank you. I should have started there. Thank you.
And the other piece, I think it's important to note that you all looked at other oversight committees in other school districts that have a half cent sales tax or surtax. And you were looking at other school board policies around the state of Florida. When you, this board came together, you chose individual subgroups to represent different aspects of the community. But as the superintendent, I do not have a person represented on, on this board. But as district, you have your internal auditor that will be a part of this committee as well as whether this committee, whatever authority the policy gives to them, the state of Florida is going to audit. We're audited on a three-year cycle on whether it is an operational audit or a finance audit. So regardless that this oversight committee, there is also state oversight of all of our funds and how we spend those dollars. So part of the committee was also the portion down at the bottom that I made the recommendation that as board members, you should, you all each have a board option to choose someone to represent you. And when we were meeting, I sort of shared with you, you probably need to choose people who know something about auditing, who know accounting, so that when we present these reports, there's people there who can have an understanding, that can go through those reports, share with the committee. It is the board's responsibility to also have an audit committee. You are the audit committee. So there really are three levels of auditing of these funds that will take place. There will be our normal auditing through the state of Florida, through the AG's office. There'll be the audit, through the audit committee, your internal auditor will also be a part of this process. And then that committee themselves will have eyes to, to audit the, those funds.
Thank you, thank you. And, and I appreciate Mr. Turner bringing forward the importance of accountability to these dollars. We take that very seriously and I think I can speak for the board, but certainly I'll say I take that very seriously as it relates to how the dollars are spent upfront, not just how we go back and audit and look in arrears as to how those funds were spent. We have talked about the state requirement that these dollars be spent on capital expenditures only and that there be a transparent and rigorous process to accompany the master plan which outlines the delineation of funds and how they will be spent. I think that fiscal responsibility is a priority of everyone on this board. We've talked about it, not just as it relates to the sales surtax, but also as it relates to our regular operations and the audits that we undergo on a regular basis. So I appreciate you going through that. I also, for purposes of the public's understanding of the 22 members, that this board has spent hours thinking through a diverse representation from across geography, discipline, and various other representations for the board. So I think it's important to quickly go through these. They will be one representative of a district parent organization. This will be from the District Advisory Council, District Parent Teacher Association. And, and those representatives will rotate through. Representative, the Jacksonville Regional Chamber of Commerce. Representative, the Northeast Florida Builders Association, the Northeast Florida Association of Realtors. Both of those organizations have endorsed the referendum and the sales surtax. And particularly, the Northeast Florida Association of Realtors has sat with us for countless hours through council meetings and otherwise and have been great advocates for this district and, and understanding the importance of the sales surtax. Representative of a post-secondary institution from Edward Waters, Florida State College, Jacksonville University and the University of North Florida. A representative appointed by the mayor of Atlantic Beach, Baldwin, Jacksonville Beach, or Neptune Beach in rotational order, recognizing and understanding that we have incorporated cities as part of our incorporated city-county and having their representation is important. One representative from the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, one representative of the Jacksonville NAACP, one representative of the Foundation for Duval Schools, one representative of the Jacksonville Public Education Fund, one representative of the City of Jacksonville Citizen Planning Advisory Committee, better known as CPAC. And that is on a rotational basis as well. Is there six of those committees from throughout the city? One representative of the City of Jacksonville Joint Planning Committee, which was referenced earlier in tonight's meeting. Those are, are citizen representatives on the joint planning committee as well as a representative from the school board, who will not be the representative here. Representative of the Jacksonville Civic Council. Representative of Duval Teachers United. Representative, the Jacksonville Fraternal Order of Police. There's quite a bit of safety and security that happens as, as an opportunity of the sales surtax. One member appointed by each of the seven school board members, this is what the superintendent referred to earlier. School board members may consider his or her appointee having experience in labor, finance, or commerce, or representing a nonprofit organization, providing services to the district or representing the, the interests of Duval County parents. None of those have to be mutually exclusive and I have to imagine that those representatives will represent a multitude of those various interests and representation. And, and the primary cause for this group is that we know that these institutions have been considerable advocates for public education and partners of ours as we think about our accountability to the taxpayer, to the public and to the students of Duval County Public Schools. So I very much appreciate the citizens' concern and the council's concern for having a committee that will oversee and help us be better together as to how we implement the sales surtax when it gets in front of the voters and when it is passed. And I think that this is an important piece of knowing that that accountability, that responsibility to the taxpayers, the community, the students of Duval County Public Schools and all of our staff who come to work in these buildings every day. This is, it's very important to us, the accountability of this. It's very important that this committee operate much like the joint, the, the Joint Planning Committee, the Planning Commission and other commissions that make recommendations to the city council and then the council approves or, or moves through a process of assessing those recommendations. So really appreciate the, the work and thought and time that went into creating this policy. And I think we are of one accord as we speak about the need for reflection, for accountability and for transparency as it relates to the sales surtax. So, thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
I'll mention something. Just to, to sort of overlay that, what Board Member Smith-Wares said. I think we took great lengths to really think about who was supposed to go on this, this list and who was going to be in that room. And I think, when I think about when we first started even talking about the, the half cent or how to get the funds of money, we talked about how do we make sure the citizens in the community is involved in what we're doing? And I think we laid that out right from the beginning and I think this does just that. And I think there's comments around, well, are there friends or foes on this list? And at the end of the day, 15 years is a long time. And our hope and our, our prayer is that we have everybody on board when it comes time to, to do this for our kids. So I think this is a, is a great list. There's always things that could come in and out. But I think we've done a good job of really thinking about how to make this the best possible and bring folks along in the process.
Anyone else? The only thing I want to add is that while we do not have a date for the referendum, I believe moving forward with this committee demonstrates to the community our commitment and, and our focus on getting a referendum on the ballot with a date. And we are going to continue to do that work. I would just also like to, this is a little history lesson because I met with Dr. Krizner today and she shared with me some information from the Peabody Study that you can only see at the main library and the historic Florida records and you can only read that in the room, you can't take it with you, kind of thing. But Duval County, back in the 60s, had an issue with funding of schools. And what was very interesting in this report is that it specifically mentioned our urban core and the facilities back then in the 60s needing repair and to, to be more equitable. And here we find ourselves in 2019 with a plan and a project to address those needs that were recognized by the Peabody Study back in the 60s. And it's my hope that as the days pass ahead of us, that we will see a date on the ballot and that we will be able to move forward and do the right thing for all students in, in Duval County. It was just a very interesting read. So if you're free on a, have some time and you want to go read that, I think it's a couple of hundred pages or a hundred and, maybe about 200 pages. Bring a pencil and pen and, and take lots of notes. I think it's a, would be a good thing to read. I just wanted to throw that little bit of history in. Anybody else? Seeing none, I call for your vote. You have passed this item seven zero. We are on to Board Member Travel. The Duval County School Board approved and confirmed the travel listed below for official business of the district and that it complies with the rules of the State Board of Education. July 16 through 17, 2019, Lakeland, Florida, Florida Department of Education, meeting, Willie. September 12, 2019, Kissimmee, Florida, Legislative Committee Meeting, Anderson. September 25 through 26, 2019, Howie in the Hills, Florida, Florida School Board Association Policy Governance Forum, Hershey. September 25, 2018, 2019. 25 through 28, 2019, Miami, Florida, National School Board Association, Council of Urban Boards of Education, Jones. October 16 through 19, 2019. Santa Fe, this says NC, but I know Santa Fe is not North Carolina. Isn't that California? Is it California?
It's New Mexico.
New Mexico, okay. It's not NC. I knew that. All right. Santa Fe, New Mexico, National School Board Association, COSA School of Law Practice Seminar, Smith-Wares. October 22 through 29, 2019, Louisville, Kentucky, Council of Greater, what is that?
Council of Great City Schools.
Council of Great City Schools. Annual Fall Conference, Hershey, Joyce and Willie. There was travel for September 4 through, through 6, 2019, Kissimmee, Florida, FSBA Board of Directors Leadership Training, and that was for me, but there was a hurricane and that was canceled. Therefore, I did not read that in. Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak? Is there a motion?
I moved.
Second.
It was moved by Board Member Grimes and seconded by Vice Chair Jones. Are there any board members wishing to speak? Seeing none, I call for your votes. By your actions, we've passed this seven zero. We are now on to For the Record. So Board Member Anderson, would you like to start?
I do want to extend my sincerest gratitude to all of the staff people that gave up time to prepare our schools for shelters. I'm very, very grateful that we did not suffer from this storm as much as could have been. I'm very sorry to the people in the Bahamas that have been devastated by that. But the work that has, that goes in to preparing the shelters and as Dr. Green reported on this evening, is immense. It costs us money. It costs us time. It costs us labor and people and hours with family and preparing your own homes. And so the, the sacrifice made is not lost on me, for sure. Thank you very much. I do want to make one statement about the J-bill switch-up. I think it's been, it has been an interesting turnabout from appointing to electing and, you know, that whole thing. And as we talk about it, as we talked about in the Legislative Committee today, I, I do find it interesting that what seems to be happening, and someone said in, in our meeting today, is that we're looking for solutions to problems that don't exist. I'm very, very impressed, especially as I've come onto the board at, at the, the work that has gone into this district, at the improvements that have been made over the last decade. We are closer to an A than we have ever been and we have a lot to be proud of. So to be trying to change up the governance structure, I'm just not sure why. And so I think it begs that question and I would encourage others to think about why. And a healthy amount of skepticism, I think, is warranted in this case. So I certainly don't see any reason. And I see, quite frankly, a lot of reasons not to make this structural change. So I'll say that for now. As far as the surtax referendum, I was overwhelmed at the showing at, at City Hall. And I want to thank everyone who came, who invested their time, who emailed council people, who reached out to City Hall to talk to neighbors and community members to support this effort. You know, one of the things that I haven't seen much on the timelines that we've seen about the surtax process is a joint meeting that this school board had with city council back in March. It was March 26th. And at that time, we went and we shared the facilities condition index. We shared the concurrency wasn't working. We asked for the Joint Planning Committee to come together and to start to discuss new ideas and new ideas and new options for funding because this, what we have isn't cutting it. And so, you know, to bring a resolution, to start these conversations, and to feel like this was so rushed in June, and then to be ultimately withdrawn in August, at the end of August, was certainly disappointing. I think it was Clay County and the Fourth Circuit opinion that clearly said that the governing body should not cause an unreasonable delay in placing this matter before the voters. And I think that we, we can ask ourselves, is this an unreasonable delay at this point? We have great needs, and I pray between now and the time that we are able to see this go to a ballot, that we don't suffer any tragic consequences as a result. I'm grateful that we did not suffer during a hurricane, and I hope that we get through this school year and most of next, or some of next perhaps, you know, without tragedy. I think it was said over and over again, the reality of the politics here, and quite frankly, the first time I said, I heard someone say, oh, well, it's city council and that school board, you know, that's seven politicians. Honestly, my feelings were hurt. I came on this board in November because I wanted to help children, because I wanted to make sure that our school system was functioning the best that it could for our community. And I think that that is the job that we are tasked to do here. It was never our intention to disrupt some political agenda. I think we looked at the data that was in front of us, the need that was clearly in front of us, and we exercised the authority that we thought had been given to us by statute. And so, what unfolded has been really unfortunate, and the politics of it has been frustrating. And so, I, again, thank you all for participating, but please stay vigilant, continue to be involved in our public education system. This is not the only battle we have to fight. We have a lot going on right now. Margaret Thatcher said, "You may have to fight a battle more than once to win it." So, that's my words of wisdom for this month, and I don't think that anyone here is ready to give up. And I, before I wrap up, I do want to invite people to consider attending the State Florida Board of Education meeting that will be held this month, September twentieth, over at the Kip School. And if you have thoughts or ideas that you want to share about public education for Duval County or the state, you can join us there.
Thank you. Board Member Willie?
This is like being in school, and you don't know when the teacher's going to call on you.
So, I'll start off the same way. Just thank you to all the folks who were there during the storm. And just sort of a special prayers go out to our neighbors in the Bahamas. I know we have a number of folks who have relatives and friends and loved ones who are there, and I know we may actually see some of that, like some of that sort of, the students and families coming this way. So, I know we're prepared to handle that, and we will open them with open arms. So, thank you to that. I actually had a chance to take my, the day, as people were prepping, I took my, two of my kids to go to some of the shelters and take some snacks, just to say thank you and just to see how everything was going. And it was, it was interesting because my middle child, she said, well, why are we taking snacks to them? What's going on? And I was like, well, they're taking, going to take care of all the folks who can't stay in their house during the hurricane. And they were like, oh, we should take them more. And I was like, no, I think we're taking them enough. But it was, it was just an interesting time to be in a school, but see it in a very different light. Like, if you've never been in a school in a time where it's a shelter, it's a very different environment. But I think you still have the school, school folks there. So, for example, Andrew Robinson, you had it set up, and she was like, oh, I'll make sure that the TV's on with cartoons for the kids, because that's a lot of downtime for someone who's just sitting in a shelter. So, I just thank you to all the folks who took great care of, even though the numbers were small, those folks who were in those facilities were taken great care of. I know it, I saw it firsthand, so I just want to thank the staff, all the folks who took time out of their busy schedules away from their families to be there. It's a, it's a show of just so much, and I just thank you for that. On that same vein, today, Dr. Green and I, and Dr. Krisner and some other folks were at St. Clair Evans. Samaritan's Feet had an opportunity to do something tremendous for that school today. In fact, every single student that's at St. Clair Evans got a brand-new pair of shoes today. Every single student. And it was a powerful moment. BB&amp;T was there, Alden White, really, and Principal Polydor did a fantastic job of setting it up. And it was powerful because the Samaritan's Feet actually let students choose if they wanted to get their feet washed. Feet washing is a big sort of servant leadership, servitude, sort of show of love, and they did that. And it was so beautiful to see little kindergartners getting their feet washed and then getting a new pair of socks and new pair of shoes, the smiles and the love that was in that room. It was just, it was powerful. So, thank you to all the folks involved in that, and it's why we do what we do, to serve our community, and that's going to live on for a long time. Last couple of things, had a great time really visiting, I got a chance to visit schools with Wayne Green. I want to thank you for the visit we got to take, and I saw three big things. I saw rigor, clarity, and accountability in that visit, and it just made me, my chest puff up a little bit. And I was like, I was just very proud of what we're doing, and I think, thank you for your leadership, Dr. Green, for your leadership, because we're doing things that I think people don't see, and I think it's great that we get, I got a chance to see that. I want to be able to boast that and say that up here. In addition, Dr. Clinch over at Andrew Jackson High School, Microsoft Showcase School, if you did not know, only three schools in the whole country have actually got that denotation. So, Microsoft Showcase School, that's a really big honor, so I want to shout that out. And last one, this is kind of personal, and I want to put a challenge out to the board. My mom is a breast cancer survivor. Next month, of course, is, we recognize that, and I'm going to challenge all of us on this day that's up here, I'm going to be wearing sneakers because we do a thing called Kicks for Cancer. I think coaches do that in the NCAA. So, I'm going to challenge all of us next, in October, for the October meeting, to wear sneakers or tennis shoes, just an awareness of that, because I think it's a big, it's a big deal for me, sure it's a big deal for other folks, but hopefully you can be, it's like Party on the Bottom, Business up Top, is what we'll call it. But, that being said-
Can we do it all month?
We can. And the last thing I'll say too is, to, I think Board Member Anderson said it best, that we're looking for solutions when there's not really problems. A lot of the stuff that we're seeing is up and to the right. If you're in business, it's up and to the right. You're always looking at up and to the right. And most of the things that we have going are up and to the right at this moment. So, it's always a mystery why we're trying to make changes and alter things when things are going up and to the right. So, that is a really good point, and I wanted to state that too. I like the fact that we have an elected, I mean, appointed superintendent, and I think that's-
An elected board.
An elected board. Elected and appointed, elected then appointed, and I think that's the way it should be. It gives power to the people, it disseminates power in the way that needs to be, and I think that's a very important thing, especially for a city of this size, which is really important, and a city of this makeup. So, thank you so much, and I'll yield the time.
Thank you. Board Member Smith-Warras?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I was trying to make myself a note on the October meeting that, where are my kicks? Really do want to again reiterate how much we appreciate staff and all of the work that they do to interface with EOC, an emergency first response, to prepare our buildings, to make people feel comforted there when they are away from their own families with a similar uncertainty and anxiety as the folks who have left their homes. And so, to Dr. Green, to Don Nelson, to Chief Edwards, to Dr. Krisner, to Sunita Young, I am certain that I am missing key people who are doing really important things, all of the custodians who were mentioned earlier this evening, to principals who made sure that their buildings were prepped, that children were sent home, that messaging was getting out to folks who needed it, and to anyone else who I have missed. It is a tremendous act of service to decide that the commitment that you have made to be a part of the school system and an employee of the school system is going to take precedence in a time of great danger, because you are a servant to your community. And so, I want to say thank you to each and every one of you who was involved in those efforts. We are so grateful that there was not a greater need than there was, but we know that each of you stood ready were there to be that need. And so, I cannot say enough how grateful we are and how important that is. The only other note that I will make this evening, other than congratulating Douglas Anderson again for being a national model magnet school, that is a tremendous honor and has taken a lot of work and diligence to get there. And Ms. Peak, if you were not mentioned earlier, I know you had a huge part in making that happen as well, so thank you for all of your work, is just to go back to a joint meeting that this board had, to Board Member Anderson's point about the meeting that happened this past June, actually in 2017, this board had a joint meeting with city council where we talked about our infrastructure and our needs in infrastructure. And it was at that meeting, actually, that a council member at the time mentioned, what are other districts doing? And maybe we should have a surtax. Maybe that should be our solution to what we do with our infrastructure needs. So, this conversation dates back not just to 2017, but to conversation that we had even before 2017. But there are, there have been meetings and public meetings to reflect these needs over quite some time, and the conversations have been continuous and will continue until we find and achieve an appropriate solution. And so, I want to thank my fellow board members and the superintendent and all of the staff who have been involved in those continuing conversations. We will get there, and I think Pastor Corley's words were very appropriate and well-received as this meeting opened, that sometimes it's just when. So, thank you.
Board Member Joyce?
Thank you, Board Chair Hershey. I want to reiterate the thanks to Dr. Green and staff and everyone who participated in the hurricane preparations last week. I know it was a sacrifice for a lot of our personnel in our district, and so, thank you for that. I want to congratulate all of the Teacher of the Year recipients. I was honored to be able to award one of my colleagues and my dear friends, Ms. Thompson at Stillwell, her Teacher of the Year Award this year, and the tears of joy that flowed from her eyeballs were just sweet as anything. She's a longtime deserving of that. And finally, I'm going to make this very short because my son plays for Baldwin, Indians, and he's a defensive lineman or something on the defense. And they're playing their game against Westside right now. So, while I love all of the schools in Duval County, I'm going to say right now, go Indians.
Thank you, Board Member Grimes.
Oh, me?
Yeah. Talk about that grandson?
Well, first, I, I mean, I know y'all are maybe getting a little tired of the accolades, but I tell you, I can't imagine any better people and groups and staff that, our superintendent, staff, everyone who was involved because they really care about us. I know all of y'all care because otherwise you would be doing something else that is a little, not as much time. So, and I have to also say to our chair that I appreciate what you've done. I know that you have been probably running on your tennis shoes way before he said that, but you really have been there, and it's really been great, and you're going to be a hard act to follow. Right, Warren? And I, and I'm very sad again that we're not further along. I feel like, you know, we should be at the point of putting that referendum on the ballot. So, but we'll try to keep on, hold on, and I'm sorry I wasn't at that last meeting, but I had, I had to go to Miami and, because my daughter gave me another grandson, so it was very, it was kind of, it was great coming from what was going on here and then going to Miami to see a new little person born, so. And that's about it.
Thank you very much, and congratulations on your grandson. Vice Chair Jones?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We talk about putting students first, and I just want to commend the superintendent, staff, and the principal that did an outstanding job first day of school. Remember, we haven't met since the first day of school. You know, it happened without any hitches, and all the schools that I attended on the opening day were smooth, no one had a problem, all the air conditioners were working, thank the Lord, and thank Don Nelson, I don't see him here. But it really went well, and I think it's one of the best opening days that I've experienced since I've been on the school board. I just want to thank the staff and all those principals that did such an outstanding job. And also, thank Don Nelson and his staff for getting the fire that happened at SP Livingston a few weeks ago, and those students were able to move to another area, and they were able to continue to have school in the building without much disruption. I just want to thank them for their work in that area. And the partnership with the shelters was unbelievable. I had the occasion to visit Enterprise Academy in Oakleaf, and to see the people there, they were not a lot, but they were well taken care of. The principal took time, I'm not going to name the school, to take time to paint his office while he was there all day, and I thought that was neat.
Dr. Green didn't, like she thought that was neat.
But he was there, he was present.
He saw that man himself.
I didn't want to get him in trouble, but he was using his time wisely. And also, a thank you to all the many citizens who went out to support the sales tax referendum at the council meeting. It was unfortunate that one person caused all of us to be kicked out of the council chambers, but I think people were just frustrated at the comments that were being made to the superintendent and the school board. And I just want to thank Chairperson Hershey for her job. I mean, you've been working on this for, what, April, March, trying to bring a consensus with those who had issues with the sales tax referendum, and you've done an outstanding job, as Board Member Grimes said, and I just want to thank you publicly for your work. It hasn't been easy, you have been relentless, you've been optimistic, and done a great job in the area. And also, a thank you to those five individuals who voted not to withdraw the bill. I think council members Morgan, Dennis, Carlucci, DeForre, and Jackson are to be commended because they chose not to withdraw the bill. They saw the need and recognized that their role was to put it on the ballot and let the voters decide if it's something they wanted to fund. And I just want to thank those five individuals again for their work and support of public education and, most of all, our students. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to start with the hurricane shelters, and we've heard a lot about it. You know, Board Member Willie shows us all up, because I did not take snacks when I visited shelters. I did take pictures and post them, though, so people could see that principals were there working. But what was really neat is that there was one of the schools in my district at Atlantic Coast, which is a special needs shelter, and the fact that there were staff from Mayo Clinic there to help assist with people who may be staying there with special needs was impressive. I was at Twin Lakes Academy Elementary, and the school safety assistant from Terry Parker was there, and she was thrilled to be there. She was very happy, she said she was there last year. And that was the place that I went in, and this family who goes there for every time there's an evacuation, they had this air mattress that was like this thick, and it was about the size of a queen-size bed. And I was like, they had it all blown up, they were good to go, and they told me that I could get one at Walmart for sixty-five dollars. But I was very impressed because it was, it was a real nice blow-up mattress. And then I had the opportunity to be at Mandarin Middle. City Councilman Hazuri, as well as City Councilman Boylan, joined me- as well as City Councilman Boylan, joined me for that. They got there a few minutes before I did, and they said, "Is Lori here?" And they said, "Yes, but it's Lori Westbury", who was the assistant principal. So, they went in and, and I got there a little later. But, so, Assistant Principal Westbury and Principal Williams showed us around, and they actually had pets there. So, we got to see how pets were cared for. So, there's just a lot that goes into it, and everybody's commented on it, but I don't think the community is as aware of what a public service that is. I would also just like to point out that in August, there was the, I forget the name of it, but it was like the Bold City Classic or something like that, that was at Bowls. There was a football game. I know that, who played that one night? Was it, was it Lee and somebody else played one night?
Bartram, I think.
Bartram Strings and- Bartram Trail, and Lee played. But I went to the Atlantic Coast and Mandarin High game. It was very hot, and I was like, felt like I was really melting. And it was televised, and the picture was awesome. So, my husband and I stayed a very short time and went back to our living room and watched it on TV. But the greatest thing about that was it really showcased our students. That was professionally done. I don't, did anybody else watch that on TV? It was very exciting to see our students on TV and for our, our district to get the recognition that we did. It was played at the Bowls School, and Team Italian did an excellent job in, in an interview. So, I just want to thank everyone involved. I think Publix was involved in that. But it was a great way to showcase talent at our schools here in Duval County. Finally, would like to invite everyone who is free Friday morning from nine to eleven to join us at City Hall for the Charter Revision Committee. Dr. Green and I will be addressing the committee meeting. Representative Fisher will also be there that same day addressing the committee, as will a couple of other people. Encourage you to, to attend as well. I think that what you're going to see is that ten years ago, when the charter revision met, we were going to see the great things that have happened in Duval County over the past ten years. We have a lot to be excited about. That's all I have. Does anybody else have anything? Do I hear a motion to-
We adjourn.
Second. It was moved by Vice Chair Jones and seconded by Board Member Smith-Wares. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Yes.
You know, we are here to serve the public and the community, and so, that's what it's all about. And so, if there are people who need help and need a place to stay, that's what we're here for, and that's what our school was built for when they built it twenty years ago.
Well, it starts with Duval County Public Schools, making sure that we have everything that we need. We had materials that were here two or three days prior to the shelter being opened, just to make sure if a worst-case scenario came, we were prepared.
We're kind of behind the scenes, just making sure that everything is going, running smoothly from a building standpoint and facility standpoint. So, that means like really thinking about where everybody's gonna sleep, how is everybody gonna eat, how are we just gonna organize all of the people who are here to support our clients, our evacuees?
Principals who have that leadership experience, they have the experience of working with large crowds, you know, large number of children, and how to manage having a large number of people on their campus is, is their expertise. And so, who better to have than them be here to ensure, one, that we keep our community safe, and, two, that we protect the community's property, our schools?
And I would say that overall, I want to say the highest count we had was about a hundred and seventy-eight, but it does take a lot of manpower and teamwork. And like I shared too, my assistant principal was here the entire time. And so, I just think it just, it takes a village.
There was a lot of district personnel who came through, and they just stopped by to see what they could do for us and for our evacuees. So, that made this experience one where I really felt part of a team, and I felt like we were all working together to provide the space for our community and those in need.
It's all about service to others and-